Ladies and gentlemen, the session of this honorable body is about to commence. Everybody will please rise.
Being the City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer, hereby call this regular session to order. Will the Secretary of State please call the roll?
The Honorable Members of this Angunyampanlunsod, Honorable Camille Angelina M. Lopez, Honorable Michael Gerard Timorada, Honorable Joel De Puwa, Honorable Yunilo Y. Catipon, Honorable Galileo Piangiles, Honorable Oscar M. Gose II, Honorable Ralph Peter Sumali, Honorable Jennifer Spighty Toledo, Honorable Beverly Lwan Sing Luna, Honorable Vinicius Di Manalo, Honorable La Fiora Rockford, Honorable Riofer Nicole H. Rongkilio, Honorable John Paulo N. Makala, Honorable Immanuel T. Reheto, and the Honorable Presiding Officer, Honorable Mark Arts Piliwansi.
Do we have a call room?
We have a call room.
The Chair hereby request Honorable Joel Puwa to lead, uh, to deliver the equation.
Almighty Father, we raise our hearts to you in gratitude for the wonders of creations of which we are part for your providence and sustaining of our needs and for your wisdom and guides the course of our universe. We acknowledge the sins against you and the rest of the creation. We have not been good and stewards of nature. We have confused your commands and subdued the earth. The environment may suffer wrongdoing and now we reap the harvest of our abuse of indifference. We return to you, the loving Father, and forgiveness of our sins. We ask, we love the... the loved ones and the hand of procession. We spared the threat of calamities a natural made. We beseech you to inspire us all in the group responsible stewards, your creation and generous neighborhood and to those in need. Amen. And to you, Fathers.
The Chair hereby likewise requests Honorable Joel Puwa to lead the singing of National Anthem.
Atin pong ilagay ang ating kanang kamay sa ating kaliwang dibdib at awitin ang pambansang awit.
Maraming maraming salamat, Honorable Joel Puwa. Privilege, Honorable Nicole Rongkilio, you are recognized.
Good morning, Po, to everyone who's here. Mr. Chair, I must say that, Po, that I'm not fully aware of the situation, but be that as it may, I would just like to suggest, assuming that it's not yet being practiced, but if ever it is, please disregard what I have to say. I would like to suggest that the five heads of the official evacuation centers should communicate, collaborate, and coordinate with each other so that they, so that there will be no overstocking or under supply of relief goods. I would also like to suggest that there should be a quick response team with a vehicle that's always ready to transfer the excess supplies or goods. Another thing, again, this is just a suggestion, kitang kita ko po ang spirito ng bayanihan ng ating mga kababayan. I was told, Po, that there is a current existing warehouse in the city hall of Lipa for the supplies. There might come a time where there will be a surge in the number of supplies and goods such as banig, hygienic kits, first aid kits, and the like for the evacuees. I highly suggest that we utilize the cultural center as another warehouse to store and repack these items. Having official warehouses could help ease the donors and sponsors when it comes to finding which evacuation center to prioritize. Furthermore, the five heads of the evacuation centers could easily inform the supposed head of the warehouses what they need and from there, they can communicate, collaborate, and coordinate accordingly. Thank you, Po, Mr. Chair.
The matter brought up by Honorable Nicole Rongkilio is referred to Committee on Disaster Reduction. Honorable Mikey Morada, you're recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and mga kasama ng consular and mga bisita natin. I received last week a request through a resolution from the municipality of Baleti. They're asking for us kung pwede tayong maging sister city nila. So, Mr. Chair, gusto ko lang po ito ma-refer sa Committee on External Affairs para matugulang po natin agad.
Declaring one minute recess. Ano ko turisino? Turisino? Turisino 'yun? Sisterhood? External Affairs, huh? Session resumed. The matter brought up by Honorable Mikey Morada is referred to Committee on External Affairs. Privilege, Honorable Nilo Catipon, you're recognized.
Magandang umaga, ho. Gusto ko lang po ipaalamin 'yung katulad dun last week, 'yung aking privilege piece about dun sa piyesta activities. Sanay tuloy-tuloy na, hindi naman natin akalain nung January 12, ay nagkaroon tayo ng calamidad. At ito nga, ho, ay kung hindi man masyadong apektado ang Lipa dun sa tinatawag na katulad na nangyari sa portion ng west portion, west north. 'Yun ho, nasasaan ho diyan, 'yung hindi 'yung mapapansin 'yung bayan at Monsilio, Taal, at saka ho San Nicolas, Laurel. 'Yan ho ay tubog sa putik. Kaya't ah, kung nakita ho niyo sa mga video, 'yun ho nakalagay sa 'yung isang batang iyak ng iyak habang papalayo 'yung kanilang bangkado sa pulo. 'Yun ho, may ilang barangay na nasasakop ho diyan. Ang isang barangay ho diyan nasasakop ng Baleti, diyan sa pulo. 'Yun ho pulo, ay 'yan ho yang may bulkan. May nasasakop ho San Nicolas, may nasasakop ho ang Talisay. So, at saka ho itong parting Laurel. Hindi ho matutuloy ang ating piyesta activities. Ang matutuloy lang ho ay 'yung ating misa na kapiyastahan sa kadahilanan na mapakasamang itsura nga naman na nagpi-piyasta tayo habang ating mga ibakwis ay nandini sa atin sa Lusod na Lipa. Marami ho tayong ibakwis. Meron ho tayo sa Sinusluban, Tambu, Banaybanay, Santo Trivio. Ngayon ho, nag-spread na ho, nasa Pinakawitan na Montingpulo. Marami ho ang pagkain. Ang ating iintay na laho siguro ay kung tatagal pa ito, 'yung backup niyan. Diyan pa ho tayo dapat kumilos. Sa ngayon ho, ay sa tingin ko, ay hindi ho masyado tayong magkuwan muna sa mga pagkain. Madami ho, ang gusto nila ay bagong lutu lagi, lalo na ho 'yung nasa Santo Tribute, Banaybanay. Ang atin ho problema diyan, kung tatagal ho ang calamity, diyan ho tayo makakaroon ng problema. Waaabutin ho 'yan ang mga isa, dalwa, tatlulingo, dalwa na ho ang apektado. Apektado na ho ang mga eskwela natin sa Lusod na Lipa. 'Yan naman ho importante sa atin ang ating mga taga Lusod. Kaya siguro sa pamamagitan ng ating ABC, pa may meeting ho kayo with the mayor, pakisabi ho kay mayor at sa lahat na baka pwedeng may plan B na 'yung mga naiskwelahan ay utay-utay ilipat sa mga barangay-hol ng barangay. Sa kadahilanan kung ito 'yung isipin, kung tatlulingo tatagal ho ito na nasa ibakwis sa eskwelahan, papaano naman ho 'yung ating mga anak na nag-aaral? Kaya ho, ati participation ho ng barangay, napakagandahan ng gymnasium. Kung nakita ho niyo kagabi, 'yung kay President DoTting Pagdalaw sa Bulbo ng Batangas, kung nakita ho niyo 'yung mga tent ng doon sa loob, may mga pinorti ng mga kumotlaang na tabi-tabi na rin, napakainit daw ho doon, sabi kahapon ng mga nakapunta. Dito naman ho sa Lipa, magandang klima. Kaya ho, sana, pagtuunan ho ng pansin ang mga barangay captain 'yung ating mga gymnasium sa barangay na baka pwedeng utay-utay, unti-unti, siya nating ipagamit sa ating mga ibakwis, transfer from the school kung kakayanin, kung kakayanin laang ho, para naman ho may kaluagan ang ating mga eskwelang makapag-aral uli. Dahil nakita lang ho natin 'yung ibakwis, pero 'yung sacrifice ho ay hindi laang, hindi laang ho focused sa isang bagay. Kailangan ho ay malawak ang ating focus dito. Hindi ho pwedeng, ah, nakapagtayo ng, nakapagdala tayo ng relief good, ay 'yun ho, hindi po. Kailangan iintindirin naman ho natin ang mga taga sariling atin, lalo gitto ang mga eskwela. Kaya ho, ang atin ho ang kapiyastahan, postpone ho lang activities. Mula ho doon sa, nung lunes, cancelado na ho hangga sa parada, cancel daw. Ang atin ho nga, matutuloy lama, ayang misa na kapiyastahan sa ganap na alas 9:30 ng katedral. 'Yun ho, kung piyasa, piyesta, misa, konselebrasyon. At ang lahatong ito ay ating pinagpapasya't Diyos na sana ay tama na 'yung putok ng bulkan at ating gawa naman ng paraan na may saayos. Tayo ho ay kontangda niyo, meron ho tayong slogan nung nakaraang eleksyon, 'yung bangon Lipa. Ngayon ho, ang ibabangon natin ay ang buong probinsya ng Batangas. Magandang umaga, ho sa kapulungan.
Maraming maraming salamat po Honorable Nilo Catipon. Privilege, Honorable Junjun Gosos, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, good morning. Regarding lang po to, Mr. Chair, dun po sa pinangako natin sa mga pigres and poultry na magiging permanent status dito sa atin sa Lusod na Lipa, hindi pa lamang po natatapos 'yung ordinansa para pumahamayandahan natin 'yung suning ordinance natin dito. Kaya po, mamaya po sa tamang panon, ay naayos ko pong ipaextend muna 'yung moratorium ng pigre, poultry, and feed mills dito po sa atin sa Lusod na Lipa ng one year para lamang po makapag comply sila sa mga requirements natin dito sa Lusod na Lipa at para din po magran tan sila ng mga, ng mayor's permit. Kung pwede po, Mr. Chair, makirefer nalang po sa Committee on Agriculture.
Brought up by Honorable Junjun Gosos is referred to Committee on Agriculture.
And lastly po, Mr. Chair, at tayo rin po kasi ang chairman ng Committee on Land Use dito sa atin sa Lusod na Lipa, at napagalaman ko po nawala po tayong ordinansa na nagre-require po sa mga subdivision na magprovide po ng sewer treatment facilities sa mga tinataas ang subdivision dito. Napagalaman din po natin na karamihan po ng subdivision dito sa atin sa Lusod na Lipa, ang sewer, ang sewage po nila ay nadiretsyo po sa ilog natin. Most likely po, ang example example ay diyan po sa Pamintahan River. Kaya po, minarapat ko rin po na mag-privilege ngayon regarding dito dahil po, ah, sabi po sa akin ay kailangan po nating magawa ng ordinansa na inri-require natin ang lahat ng subdivision na mga magtatayo po ng mga bagong subdivision dito sa Lusod na Lipa na magprovide po ng sewer treatment facilities para po, ah, mapangalagaan natin ang ilog dito po sa atin sa Lusod na Lipa. Makirefer nalang po, Mr. Chair, sa Committee on Environment.
Before I refer, I declare a minute recess. Session resumed. The matter brought up by Honorable Junjun Gosos is referred to Committee on Environment. Privilege, Honorable of your Rockford, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, Honorable Members of this august body, guests, magandang umaga po sa inyong lahat. Mr. Chair, ah, dahil po sa nalalapit na kapistahan at alam po natin na napakadami po nating aktibidades at dahil sa dumating na hindi inaasahan nating calamidad, ay nahintupo at nagkaroon tayo ng maraming holiday. Kung kaya, nais po natin mamaya magpasan ang isang resolusyon na iextend ang apply ng mayor's permit sa Lusod ng Lipa from January 21 to February 4. And therefore, Mr. Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the committee at mamaya po iurge natin. DTI? DTI? DTI nga eh. Extension, ah, good government, ano?
Three in district, good government, huh? The matter brought up by Honorable of your Rockford is referred to Committee on Good Government.
And Mr. Chair, nung nakaraang araw po, ay may nagpunta po sa akin na isang lola. Ang kanya pong anak ay nanganak sa ospital ng Lipa at nasabi sa akin na halos lahat ng gamot na ginamit sa panganganak nila ay binili nila sa labas. Ito po ay nakakahalaga ng 8,000 pesos. Mr. Chair, sa mga ganitong sitwasyon na biglaan, paano po kung ang isang pamilya ay walang perang may ilalabas para bumili ng gamot sa labas ng ospital ng Lipa? Nagbibigay po tayo ng annual budget para sa ospital pambili ng gamot. Bukod po doon, kumikitang ospital sa pamamagitan ng Phil Hill para po dagdag pambili nila ng gamot. Nung una, ang sabi po sa akin ng lola ay nasabihan sila nung sa ospital, nailipat na lamang sa granha ang pasyente kung wala silang perang pambili ng gamot. Subalit, paano po ililipat ang pasyente kung ito ay manganganak na sa korasang iyon? Mr. Chair, bilang chairman po ng apro, tayo po ay nagtataka at nababahala sa paulit-ulit na sitwasyong ganitong pangyayari. Kung kaya, bilang isa, bilang chairman ng apro na namamahala sa paggastos ng siudad, ah, sa paglalagay ng pondo at paggastos ng siudad, nais po nating busisiin ang pera nilalagay natin kung paano nila ginagamit at ano, at paano ang paraan para bumili tayo ng gamot at sino ang namamahala dito, Mr. Chair. Kaya hinihiling po natin sa kagalangalan na chairman na i-refer ito sa Committee on Appro and Committee on Health, Mr. Chair.
The matter brought up by Honorable of your Rockford is referred to Committee on Appropriation and Committee on Health. Privilege, kung wala na po, Honorable Spighty Toledo, you're recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and sa atin pong mga nandito sa Bolwagan. Nais ko lang pong kunin ang oportunidad pong ito upang manawagan po sa ating mga kapwa, ah, nanunungkulang sa gobyerno at sa atin pong mga kababayan bilang chairperson po ng Disaster Reduction. Ay, nakakaawa po ang atin pong mga kababayan na nandun po sa evacuation center. Kung patuloy po nating sosuportahan ang mga fake news na lumalabas, na meron na tayong forced evacuation, meron na tayong mga alert level five, at kung ano-ano pa po na mga hindi ka nais-nais na mga balita po. Dahil labang nag-iikot po ako kagabi sa atin pong mga evacuation centers, nakakagulat po na bigla na lamang merong iiyak at tatakbo na sila lamang ang nakakaalam na kailangan na nilang magevacuate dahil ito'y nanggaling sa isang opisyal ng barangay na kabarangay nila na kailangan na nilang magevacuate sa oras na iyon. Pero ang kanilang mga kasamahan doon ay relax na relax na nagpapahinga, siyempre po magagambala at nandun pa rin 'yung kanilang trauma na sana ay naiiwasan natin 'yung mga ganito pong bagay. Kaya, humihiling po ako sa lahat ng mga lipenyo at mga batanggenyo na sana po ay tulungan po natin ang mga lokal na pamahalaan at ang atin pong mga organisasyon na talaga pong gumagabay sa atin sa tama pong impormasyon at huwag po nating hayaan na 'yung mga ganito pong balita ay makakaabot pa po sa atin pong mga nabiktima ng atin pong bulkang tal. 'Yun lamang po, Mr. Chair, at maraming salamat po.
Maraming maraming salamat po, Honorable Spighty Toledo. Privilege, kung wala na po, let's proceed po. Reading of the minutes of the preceding session and approve of the same. Honorable Junjun Gosos, you're recognized. January 6? Minutes, minutes? Wala sinili? January 6, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would like to request that we dispense the reading of our irregular session from January 6 to 2020 and the same be approved.
Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable Junjun Gosos hereby approve.
Business for the day, Mr. Chair. Business for the day. Number one, annual budget of barangay uno.
Refer to the Committee on Appropriation.
Two, annual budget of barangay nueve.
Refer to the Committee on Appropriation.
Three, annual budget of barangay dos.
Appropriation.
Four, annual budget of barangay Bugtong na Pulok.
Appropriation.
Five, letter request from the City Mayor addressed to the Honorable Members of the SP requesting for resolution granting authority to the City Mayor to enter into Moa with any service provider to support the process of eclaims at the OSLIP.
Refer to the Committee on Appropriation and Committee on Health.
Another request from the City Mayor for an authority to enter into and sign a Moa with Dela Salipa and other schools for the training and nursing interns of the OSLIP.
Refer to Committee on Health.
Number seven, the classification request of Lunining Tesico.
Refer to the Committee on Land Use.
Number eight, the classification request of Lagrimas Magbuhat.
Land Use.
Sanggunyampanlunsod, ah, Panlaluwigan of Batangas Resolution Number End 469.
Noted.
And number ten, Sanggunyampanlaluwigan of Batangas Resolution Number End 468.
Noted. Other matters po? Honorable Junjun Gosos, you're recognized. Other matters.
Mr. Chair, motion for urgency po regarding with the following matters. Ah, number one po request po from, for the classification of Ms. Michelle Fabi with an area of 500 square meters located at barangay Banaybanay from agricultural to commercial use. The classification request from residential to commercial use of Ms. Eileen S. Rivera with an area of 189 square meters located at barangay Siko. The classification request for alteration plan and alteration plan analysis of Marian Heights Subdivision located at barangay Kayomanggi. The classification request from agricultural to commercial use of Ms. Mr. Michael Kadungo with an area of 1,000 square meters located at barangay Mabini. Requesting po ni Mr. Michael Kadungo for the issuance of specialist permit for their proposed gasoline station at barangay Mabini. The classification request po from residential to commercial use of Ms. Maria Karen M. Gutierrez with an area of 200 square meters located at barangay Tambu. The classification request from agricultural to industrial use of Mr. JV Semania with an area of 950 square meters located at barangay Pinakawitan. And they also have a request po for specialist permit for their proposed warehouse in barangay Pinakawitan. The classification request din po from agricultural to industrial use of Mr. Carlito Ang with an area of 1,000 square meters located at barangay San Benito. And lastly po, our classification request of Ms. Illuminal Laines from, ah, with an area of 151 square meters from residential to commercial use located at barangay Maraway.
There's a motion for urgency, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable Junjun Gosos for urgency is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I would like to request that the earlier stated items be considered, ay be exempted from the three reading principle and approve for third and final reading.
Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable Junjun Gosos is hereby approved.
And lastly po, Mr. Chair, 'yung pung regarding po dun sa privilege pitch ko kanina, 'yung pung extension ng moratorium ng pigres and poultry. I would like to request, Mr. Chair, for urgency.
There's a request for urgency, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable Junjun Gosos for urgency is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I would like to request a resolution extending the moratorium of pigre, poultry, and feed mills dito po sa atin sa Lusod na Lipa to give them time to comply with all the requirements that was given to them by the Senator and the City Permiss Office for one year.
Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable Junjun Gosos is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable of your Rockford, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, please consider item number one, barangay budget of barangay uno. Number two, number three, number four, as urgent, Mr. Chair, under business for the day.
There's a motion for urgency, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable of your Rockford is hereby, for urgency, is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I move that we pass a resolution approving the barangay budget of barangay uno amounting to 5,413,147. Barangay nueve amounting to 2,43637. Barangay dos amounting to 4,753,172. And barangay Montingpulo amounting to 8,011,22 pesos. The same be approved for third and final reading and exempt from the three reading principle.
Any...
Teka lang, wala ang agenda?
I'm declaring a one-minute recess. Session resumed. There's a motion, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable of your Rockford is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I have a general sequel balita forwarding to me the annual budget of barangay Mataas na Lupa. Please refer to the Committee on Appro, Mr. Chair.
Refer to the Committee on Appropriation.
Mr. Chair, the same be considered as urgent.
There's a motion for urgency, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable of your Rockford for urgency is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I move that we pass a resolution approving the annual budget of barangay Mataas na Lupa amounting to 7,718,568. The same be excused from the three reading principle and approve for third and final reading and all barangay budget be exempt from the signature of the members of this Angunyampanlunsod.
Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable of your Rockford is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, by authority of the Chair and as a member of the Committee on Good Government, I move that we pass a resolution extending the application of mayor's permit from January 21 to February 4 in the city of Lipa. The same be excused from the three reading principle and approve for third and final reading.
There's a motion for the extending of the mayor's permit. Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable of your Rockford is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, I have here a letter request coming from the secretary of this Angunyampanlunsod requesting the Honorable Members of this august body to pass a resolution granting authority to the City Vice Mayor to enter and take contract for consultancy services of poor professionals for the office of this Angunyampanlunsod. I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Appro.
Refer to the Committee on Appropriation.
The same be considered as urgent, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion for urgency, any second, seconded. There's a motion for urgency, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, the motion of Honorable of your rokofort for urgency is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I move that we pass a resolution granting authority to the city vice mayor, Mark Aris Piluan Singh, to enter in the contract for consultancy services of four professionals for the office of this Sangguniang Panglumso to be taken from the consultancy services under the maintenance and operating expenses of this Sangguniang Panglumso amounting to 20,000 pesos per month. The same be excused from the three reading principle and approve for third and final reading.
Any second.
And be exempt from the signature of the members of this Sangguniang Panglumso.
Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, the motion of Honorable of your rokofort is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, in addition, I would also like to exempt the resolution for the extension of the mayor's permit para po, oh huwag na, gusto niyo pinmaha? O exempt na natin? 'Yung, the extension of the mayor's permit be exempt from the signature of the members of the SP.
Any second, for the extension of, exemption of the signature, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, the motion of Honorable of your rokofort for the exemption of the signature in extending the mayor's permit is hereby approved. Other matters? Honorable Camille Lopez, you're recognized.
Your honorable Chair, I move to request for the urgency of business for the day, item number six. A resolution granting authority to the city mayor to enter into and sign a MOA with the De La Salipa and other schools for urgency.
There's a motion for urgency, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, the motion of Honorable of your roko, Camille Lopez is hereby approved. Go on.
Oo nga, ipansin ko. Your Chair, I move to pass a resolution granting authority to the city mayor to enter into and sign a MOA with De La Salipa and other schools for the training of nursing interns at the ospital ng Lipa and the same be approved and exempted for the third and final reading.
Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, the motion of Honorable Camille Lopez is hereby approved. Other matters po? Kung wala na po, there's a motion of adjournment, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, session is adjourned.